Thank you for coming to the April 18th Board of County Commissioners Meeting. Commissioner, our Chairman Glenn Adams and Marshall Faircloth are unable to attend tonight's meeting, but they send us their best wishes. At this time, I would like to introduce to you the young lady that will be doing the Pledge of Allegiance, and then after, before the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll go into the invocation. We have a very special young lady present this evening to believe the pledge. I take great pleasure in introducing Laura Dunningan, who is in the ninth grade at Village Christian Academy. She enjoys reading and playing volleyball. Lauren is a member of the Future Business Leaders of America and the Key Club. She has also participated with three Alpha Kappa Alpha mentorship groups, Emerging Young Leaders, Culture, Peers, Pearls, I'm sorry, and Ascend. Lauren is also a Fayetteville Strong member at Simon Temple AM Zion Church. So after the invocation, Lauren will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please join me? By your ass. Dear Lord, our heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. Thank you for those of us that are here to do the work that you require of us in taking care of our citizens. County Youth Council. We ask for your guidance. We would like for him to stand and introduce himself again to the body, please. We ask for your love. We ask you to help us to be compassionate, show a lot of compassion when it comes to
Hi, my name is Brian Craig.
our fellow citizens. And all other blessings we ask in your name.
I attend Cumberland International Early College Youth Council, Early College High School,
In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
located on FSU campus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
I'm a part of FCYC, Fayetteville-Cumberland Youth Council, and I'm part of my school's SGA and my school's speech and debate.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And I will be a junior next year.
And you attend, what school was that, sir?
Cumberland International Early College High School.
all.
Thank you. Fantastic. John, if we can, can we get a picture with her? I'm sorry it wasn't Terry Safer High School, though. But we're glad you're here, and we'll be talking to you later on during this meeting,
He did. He's taking care of holes. Right side.
sir.
Isn't that something?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
County Manager.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is our public comment period, and I'll be happy to read the public comment policy if you would like for me to do so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Our public comment period shall last no longer than 15 minutes. No time may be yielded to a speaker by another speaker. The speakers will be acknowledged by the board in the order in which their names appear on the sign-up sheet. When you come to the lectern, address the board and begin your remarks by stating your name and your address. The public comment period is not intended to require the board to respond to any impromptu questions. Speakers will not discuss matters regarding the candidacy of any person seeking office. Speakers should be courteous in their language and presentation. Written comments or supporting documents may be left with the clerk to the board.
Thank you, County Manager. Are there any speakers? I believe that we have one.
That's correct. Mr. Robert Neins, Heinz, excuse me.
Heinz.
Ms. Heinz, could you come to the podium, please? Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, again. I'm here to talk about United Way. My name is Robert Heinz, President, CEO of United Way of Cumberland County, 222 Maiton Lane, here in Fayetteville, 28301 is our zip. I'm here to talk about, and thank you again for your support of 211. And I will explain for those in the audience or watching by TV, 211, this coming July will be our fifth anniversary. Any health and human service agency that a person needs, all they have to do is pick up the phone and dial 211. For example, if they need food, housing, utilities, childcare, educational services, financial education, credit counseling, healthcare, job training, mental health, substance abuse, senior services, volunteer opportunities, and disaster services. And the disaster service is very important to us, and I will explain that in the next few minutes. This is a free confidential multilingual service, and this is very important, 24/7, any language. Commissioner Evans, if you're at the call center, and if I call and I'm speaking Hungarian, you can hit a button, it will translate it to English, you will find the necessary agencies that I need speak back in English, it will come back over the phone from me in Hungarian. Now, why is this so important? This year, the Cumberland County students and Cumberland County public schools speak 98 languages, and they're from 74 different countries. So we're a very versatile community for less than 400,000 people. The other thing I want to share is that Hurricane Matthew, we had approximately 1,900 calls in a six-week period for disaster relief, which was more, we've only had in the past 1% disaster relief calls. This past October to November 20th, 40% of the calls were for disaster relief. And so we are very interested into the partnership with the city and the county, and we want to thank you for all you've done for us. This service, 211, is free because of the county, the city, PWC, and the hospital are the funders. And again, we want to thank you for your support. You will receive an invitation for July 17th will be our fifth anniversary. Any questions? I want to keep you to the time.
Any comments from the board? Thank you so much for coming, Ms. Heinz.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. And before we move on to the agenda, I forgot one important thing, and that was to introduce Lauren's parents. Mr. and Mrs. Cleo Dunningan, would you please stand? It wouldn't have been right to go any further without introducing you for that wonderful young lady that you have there. Thank you so much for bringing her out. Thank you.
Item number one on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and this evening I do have a request for a change. I've received a written request from the attorney representing the tree farmers, a request to defer action on item 3B, which is a rezoning case. It's case P. 16-46. I would like to note that we do have speakers signed up this evening to speak because this was advertised, and I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, that we go ahead and hold the public hearing, but defer any action this evening.
Okay. So it's a pleasure, Miss...
And that would be the only change to the agenda.
Okay.
We would need a motion, Commissioner Evans, on approval of the agenda with deferred action on the planning case, P. 16-46.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ready for the vote? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item number two on the agenda is our consent agenda.
Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I ask that 2C3, renewal of the leased property for foster care, family visitation, be put on the discussion agenda.
Okay.
That's all.
Item 2C3?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other items that need to be pulled for discussion? If not, I call for a motion for approval of consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of 2C3.
Second.
Thank you so much. All in favor?
Unanimous. Okay. So now we'll move into item 2C3, which is renewal of leased property for foster care, family visitation.
Yes. I ask that matter be pulled, and my concern is with 40-plus buildings and properties that we own, I'm not saying this shouldn't be done, but we can't find somewhere where we can do this without paying a rental company $18,000 a year? I mean, that's, I mean, I've just been going over the addresses on the list of stuff that the county owns, and we'd have to end up paying them $1,500 a month for a total of $18,000 annually. And with everything else being tight, I just think that maybe we have a spot that we already own that we could do this at. That's all.
Yes, sir. This item was first brought to the Facilities Committee this time last year, and we actually, it was actually moved to the following month because the Facilities Committee asked staff to go back and talk with the school system about available facilities and also to look at county facilities. We did a complete review in conjunction with the Department of Social Services, and at that time, we did not, we were not able to identify some appropriate available space that was equal to the space that was asked to be leased. So this is actually for a one-year renewal of that lease. I do have John, the Assistant Director, Interim Assistant Director from the Department of Social Services, that may be able to provide more clarity than that if you would like.
That's fine. I don't, that'd be great. Yeah. How many square feet do you need?
Well, actually, the McGilvery site is, we actually, even with the site that we have now at McGilvery, we actually have to turn away some of the visitations during primetime hours. There's about 60 through the months of January through March that we still don't have enough space for. Part of the problem was prior to the McGilvery site, we had to house visitations at our own social services department, and we were very limited with space on that. Families were having to sit in open areas, such as in the Delhi area, where there was a lot of, there was a lack of privacy for a lot of the families. You had children running around in public areas. So we had worked with the county. One of the requests was, before we did go with McGilvery, was to look at any school properties, county properties, anything that would meet the needs for these families. And as Amy had said, we were not able to find anything currently at that, or it wasn't properly zoned for our use. So we did wind up with McGilvery. It gives it much more of a family-oriented area. It's private, and I know it's worked very well for the families. And as far as square footage, I could pull that up for you if you'd like.
That's right. Is it, you said that even that's not enough? You've had to turn families away. Is it staffed or operated, what hours? Seven days a week, six, five days a week? What is it?
It's, it's five days a week. It's during normal business hours.
Nine to five-ish?
Yeah.
Okay.
And our primetime hours are usually from 3:00 to 5:00, when kids are out of school and things like that, and that's when there's more requests to be using the room, so.
Okay. Well, that's why I just wanted to hear that somebody else was looking around, because I got this list of 45 buildings we own that are, some are sitting vacant, some are showing. We have several thousand square feet available. We'd like additional tenants, and that could be us for free.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any more comments on this item? Excuse me?
He can't see. He couldn't see.
Oh, Mr. Keefe, I'm sorry.
John, following up a little bit on Commissioner Bruce, this is for our growing population of foster children.
Correct.
So your needs have been exacerbated by our number-one ranking, right?
Yes.
So this is an extension of what you had before.
Correct.
So is it, is this going to be enough, or are we just camouflaging a bigger problem?
Well, actually, we have looked at a site adjacent to McGilvery, but that's something that's still in the works, but there's another building right next to it that we have also visited as potential to expand. Unfortunately, the foster children needs are growing. They, they aren't shrinking, so that is something that in the future we may need to look at larger areas as time goes on.
I guess my point, John, is I know you're doing what you're doing, but I think the public needs to know that because of our foster care situation, that it exacerbates into things like this. It continues to grow, and, you know, it's, it's a difficult situation we're in the middle of, that we really need to find a better solution.
It is. It definitely is. I agree.
Commissioner Council?
One question. Since 3 to 5 would be the, is when you, that's the time period you have the most requests for, have you thought of extended hours? Past 5 o'clock?
They, I'd have to actually look into that for you. I know there's been some discussion. I couldn't answer it right now for you, but the 3 to 5 timeframe is, has always been classified as our prime time, just because the kids are just out of school, the court orders are, you know, during that timeframe for the visitations, and we need to get the rooms available. So I could, I could look into that more and to get you more detail on the timeframe.
I would appreciate it, because for older children, well, if they're, if they're involved in any kind of activities, 3 to 5, I just think we need to be more proactive in those instances and be more flexible with our hours. And with that, are you...
I'm content. I just wanted to make sure that somebody was...
Oh, yeah.
Looking around, because I also heard the same thing that Commissioner Keefe heard, which is we're having to actually house some of these, of our own county residents in other counties. And so that's what I'm saying, if we, we need to make a big jump into something, kind of getting a building beside each building until we are running the whole block, we might need to go ahead and take the leap of faith to see what our percentages have grown over the last couple of years and kind of scale that out to where, instead of doing 18,000 here, 14,000 here, and all that stuff, we either reshift our building or acquire one. Okay? So thank you for, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Okay. Without any more comments, is there a motion to approve item 2C3?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Unanimous. The next item on the agenda are public hearings. The first one is an uncontested rezoning case, case P. 1710, and I'd ask Mr. Lloyd to present this case.
Thank you. As the manager said, the first case is an uncontested case. Only half of this parcel is located in the county, and that's the vacant half. Anything that's developed on this, because it's a conditional zoning, which is what the request, will have to come back to you for site plan approval. The planning board recommended unanimous for approval.
Open the public hearing. And Ms. White, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Close the public hearing. As for, we ask for the vote. Is there a motion?
Discussion. You can make the motion first, and I can discuss.
Excuse me?
If you want to make the motion first, I'm sorry. I just had a question.
Okay. I'm sorry. Mr. Keefe, I'm not seeing your light at all. Please, I've got glasses on, too. Is this, yes, sir.
This is a pretty unique piece of property, a unique property. It's one parcel, it looks like.
Right.
But part of it is in a municipality, and the other part is in an unincorporated area.
Right.
The part in the municipality, and I'm not going to fight, I just want some clarification on this, but the part in the municipality has all the zoning it needs, but the part that's in the unincorporated area doesn't, but it's still one piece of property.
Correct.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't the homeowner, or the property owner, just petition to have it all put into the municipality?
And I talked to staff about that today. They'd never been told, but one of the conditions on this is that we recommend, we can't say it's, it has, it has to be to be approved, but one of the conditions that we put down is we recommended that they would take this portion into the town of Mills. They would petition to be taken in.
So will, will a petition be made to do this?
They haven't said, not necessarily. It's still up to them.
It just seems, it seems odd that you have one piece of property, you're going to have two separate zonings on one piece of property in, not, not in a, one in an unincorporated area and the others.
Right.
Should be cleaned up. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Are there any more...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, sir. Want to read the first motion?
Oh, gosh. I shouldn't have done that. I got, motion to move and find the request for the rezoning consistent with the 2030 growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated and the recommendations of the planning staff.
Second.
All in, all in favor?
Unanimous. The next item...
I was just, this is the item that Mrs. Robinson has been involved in building a recreation center for several...
Right.
Several years. Just wave your hand. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm ready.
The next item on the agenda is item 3B. It's case P. 16-46. This is the item that we're going to defer any action on, but Mr. Lloyd, do you want to give a brief overview before we call the public hearing, please?
Yes, ma'am. And I'll try and make this as smooth as I can. Luckily tonight, we won't have to read the motion that went before the planning board, the long motion. As you can see, it's a page long for both of those motions. But briefly, the subject property that's being requested for, to be removed is approximately 69 acres. Okay. Shown in a hatch pattern. It's right at the gateway of Owen Drive, 87, the NDMLK, shown in a hatch pattern. The request is for this to be removed from the Coliseum overlay, Coliseum Tourism Overlay District. Without getting too specific, I'll give you, or belaboring this, we were approached by the Commissioners as well as the board, Coliseum Board, with the help of everyone, we coordinated the boundaries of this district. Okay? The district, the overlay district was drawn, and then we worked at length to see what uses would be allowed in this district. And the underlying zoning here, there is underlying zonings, but only specified uses are permitted in the Coliseum Tourism Overlay District. So I need to explain that. Go ahead and show the ladies. Okay, there's a lot of the area adjacent to this, a single-family housing, shown in yellow, DW designating double wides, SW single wides, and office and institutional is blue with some small commercial in red, number four. Okay. Aerial view of the subject property, which is fairly wet. As you can see, there's the hydrogydatic soils. And while you're looking at these photos, so we drew the boundary with, in conjunction with some Commissioners and the Coliseum Board. And then we went over the uses. So this was a long process, and it happened, it was approved by you all just a little bit more than a year ago, a year and a week. We worked with this applicant who wanted a specific use that was not included in this district, billboards to be included. So we did that. We went ahead and included it, worked with the applicant and that. And keep in mind, during this process, all the property owners in this had their opportunity to talk with staff and then show up to the planning board or this board and be asked to be not included in this overlay district. And one of the things about this overlay district is protection of the view shed going into it, which this is right on an important corner. That's why we made extended, at the same time, a limitation on billboards in conjunction with the city. And by the way, we worked with the city on this, too, because some of this land's in the city. So we worked with limiting billboards going down 301 South. The concession we made for billboards within this district was every 1,000 feet along Owen Drive. So a little bit more than a year later, this applicant wants to be removed from the district, an important parcel. We worked with the applicant with uses he requested to be allowed in this district. We worked with him to get that allowed. With that being said, all right, that's a brief overview. The planning staff recommended against this being pulled out, feeling like if you're going to go ahead and start allowing parcels to be pulled out, then you might as well not have the district. The planning board, who I'm representing tonight, felt the same way and voted unanimously to deny this request. And there are speakers in opposition.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Ms. White, we have, we do have speakers, correct?
Yes, sir. We have two speakers in opposition. Our first speaker is Mr. Richard Breeden.
Commissioners, thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Richard Breeden. I live at 2608 Chain Street, which...
So we did that. We went ahead and included it, worked with the applicant in that. And keep in mind, during this process, all the property owners in this had their opportunity to talk with staff and then show up to the planning board or this board and be asked to be not included in this overlay district. And one of the things about this overlay district is protection of the view shed going into it, which this is right on an important corner. That's why we made extended, at the same time, a limitation on billboards in conjunction with the city. And by the way, we worked with the city on this, too, because some of this land's in the city. So we worked with limiting billboards going down 301 South. The concession we made for billboards within this district was every thousand feet along Owen Drive. So, a little bit more than a year later, the, this applicant wants to be removed from the district, an important parcel. We worked with the applicant with uses he requested to be allowed in the, in this district. We worked with him to get that allowed. With that being said, all right, that's a brief overview. The planning staff recommended against this being pulled out, feeling like if you're going to go ahead and start allowing parcels to be pulled out, then you might as well not have the district. The planning board, who I'm representing tonight, felt the same way, voted unanimously to deny this request. And there are speakers in opposition.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Ms. White, we have, we do have speakers, correct?
Yes, sir. We have two speakers in opposition. Our first speaker is Mr. Richard Breeden.
Commissioners, thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Richard Breeden. I live at 2608 Chain Street, which is in, located in Dogwood Acres.